... board, Councilman London, Councilman Spiegel.
President.
Councilman Gere.
I'm here.
Councilor.
President.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes. Would somebody like to move forward with that? You had a chance to look them over that was sent out last week. Any corrections or motion for acceptance.
I wasn't here for the second one.
I will make a motion for the approval of minutes for May 29th, special council meeting and the June 7th, 2018, pre-council and regular council meeting.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. And now with the vote, the way it is, who's having to abstain on what's there?
Let's do them individually. Because two of us were here for one and one of us were here for the other.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor and seconded at this point. Do we want to let that die and then?
Yes.
Okay, that's dead. Would we like to reopen and start again?
I will make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the May 29th, 2018, special council meeting.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention, I believe?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Okay, all right. And other than that, I also, all right, thank you.
And then I'll also make a motion for the approval of the minutes for the June 7th, June 7th, 2018, pre-council and regular council meeting. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any abstaining on that? One abstaining on Terry. Thank you. Councilman Spiegel?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the current bills for payments in the total of $29,293.37. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have any professional consultant reports tonight? Thank you. Okay, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Councilman. President. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We're happy that you are here, taking an interest in the various things that are happening in our city. I want to say to the council and also to those of you who are residents here or business people here, it's been a long time since meeting after meeting that we've been able to have these types of crowds here. And many of these representing businesses are wanting to come to Irondale and to be a part of Irondale. We have tonight five public hearings, which means there's five different zoning issues that we're dealing with because of interest in the city of Irondale. And let me just say to you, I know there'll be a lot of discussion tonight and days ahead and days behind us. But that's a good thing. That's a good thing that people see that Irondale is a good place to be. We may not all agree on colors and things and businesses and those sorts of things, but I'm telling you, it spans the whole gamut of what Irondale is about. We've got people who are looking at industrial property and people who are looking at new retail. And we've got people that are looking at just a whole variety. We've got residential facility that's just started up over here, a senior living facility. I think we have a representative from Marty's here, right? Marty's doing great up in the shopping center. I was up at the shopping center. You notice that we've got the Gorilla Park cleaned out and it looks really nice, right? Those of you who have to put up with that. So we're making progress, step by step, and it's a little bit by a little bit. But I was up and I had a meeting up in the police help station there earlier last week and I was just really surprised at the number of cars in the middle of the day that were there. Shops and... I was just really surprised at the number of cars there, you know, because it wasn't that long ago that there was hardly, I drove in there and there was hardly no cars there. So it's a good thing. So that's all. I know you've got a lot of stuff on the agenda. I don't want to take much more time. I do want to introduce Jen Gray, if you will stand, Jen. Jen is a representative, lives in Irondale, is a representative candidate for House District 45 here in our area. And so if you haven't had an opportunity to meet her, please take that opportunity at the break or in this meeting. Thank you for being here.
Is everybody able to hear the councilors tonight or are microphones functioning since the mayor had some problem with this? Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any park head reports tonight? I don't believe I see anyone. All right, thank you. Why don't we start off with our council members, standing committees, or special reports? If we don't have anything with council reports. Councilman London, would you like to start us off?
First of all, I just want to say, good evening to everyone. Just talking, thinking about the park committee meeting up in July, let's put that together in July. And one thing that we want to talk about, I know there was some money that was ultimately put towards the park, like $46,000. We just want to have a discussion on exactly what we want to do with that. So just trying to look at my calendar and try to figure out, if that figured out on my calendar.
Thank you. Councilman Spiegel?
Two things. We've got a cop stop this Thursday night, the 21st, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the entrance of Montavalla Park. If anybody doesn't know what a cop stop is, it's basically just a community outreach program that the police department does. There's going to be, from Chief, actually, personally, we'll be having our next cop stop at the entrance of Montavalla Park. We will be cooking hot dogs and the neighbors will be bringing dishes, drinks, et cetera. I would like to invite all of y'all to attend. So just a community event for just everybody to get out and socialize with the police and everything. Another fun one, planning and zoning, June 29th, the last Thursday of the month, at 6:30. We've got one agenda item on there for a different zoning issue, but we will be, I will be approaching the planning and zoning board to discuss the, to start the discussion about potentially having chickens as, in the residential areas for people that want to do that. So we will be having that conversation. I know I've put it out there in a survey a few times. People seem to be interested about it, so we're going to talk about it. That's all that.
And to clarify, that is chickens, not roosters.
All right, thank you. I don't have anything new tonight. I've been out of state for the last two weeks, so I'm trying to get caught up with everything around town and it works, but I don't have anything to add tonight.
Thank you. No report? Same here tonight, for the sake of time, since we have so much on the agenda. Do we have any reports of boards and non-council committees?
Why aren't you going to go first? Land? Yes, this week.
Is Shoemaker's burning tonight? Better take a chance on that.
Hi, I'm Helen Marino with the Irondale Arts Council. Mary Allison Haynes talked to you about the grant that she submitted for the bicentennial. And I just want to say that we were awarded that $2,500 grant. So the committee will be getting together and be giving a report after they get their plan finalized. Mary Allison did it.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank the mayor and the council members and everybody and everybody on the committee for supporting the organization of an Irondale, Alabama bicentennial committee in order to complete our heritage project that will support the downtown and tourism and economic development. And we are glad to be on the list of communities officially recognized by the Alabama Bicentennial Commission.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. You do want to say something now?
Yeah.
Please.
Two things. First of all, along with the Alabama Bicentennial, Chambers also on that committee with Arts Council. And we are inviting all of you to please come to our next meeting. It's going to be July 12th, our membership meeting. Jay Lamar, who is the executive director of the Alabama Bicentennial Commission, will be our speaker. So that just really wraps everything well together. And just so you know, they think Mary Allison is a rock star. So I use her name a lot to get Jay to come. So thank you, Mary Allison. And now I'd like for y'all to introduce you to Marcia, who is one of the owners of Marty's Burgers. And she wanted to officially invite you to a really great event.
Well, we've been open, hi, I'm Marcia, by the way, I'm at Marty's up in Grantville Station. We've been open for a couple of weeks and we've had a really great response from Irondale and everywhere, really. Everybody's just been so amazing. But we want to actually do a full brand opening ribbon cutting. And we actually got our sign up, so it's also going to be like a sign lighting too. So we're going to be doing this on Thursday, the 28th. I believe we're going to do a ribbon cutting right around 5:30. And then we'll have some extra snacks and some things for you guys to try. But if you'd like to stay out for dinner, we're definitely going to light the sign once the sun starts to go down, because we do love being up there when the sun goes down. It's just a beautiful evening, like every evening, even if rain rolls through or even whatever. It's just so gorgeous being up on top of that hill. So please come if you're ready.
And tell all of them to come too.
Yes, please. Thursday, the 28th, if you haven't stopped by, we really have, like, we've just enjoyed having y'all so much. We've had police and firefighters all the time getting food.
And they'll be there.
Yeah, and they'll be there. So we're going to have the fire trucks and all that. And great for kids, too, bring the kids. So please come and hang out with us. Yeah, thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
That's for you.
We're about to break out into our public hearings. We will have serbs tonight. We will be, it will seem redundant, we'll have to break into each session and then break out of each session for each public hearing. But it's just something we have to do, so bear with us. We will be allowing public comments at the public hearings. You need to know about filling out the paper when you come forward, so please do so. Also, your comments, you're here to comment on your support or lack of support for any particular project we may have in a public hearing. And that's the basic gist of what the public comments amount to. We are not, we're not here to suggest what else somebody might be able to do. We're here to see whether or not you support or don't support the particular proposition that's on the floor. So at this point, do I have a motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing?
Make a motion, we leave regular council meetings and go into public hearing for item number one.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And councilors, please, remember, we're listening for the public hearing. We're not engaging in the public. Thank you. The first thing tonight, notice hereby given that its regular public meeting beginning at 6:30 on June 19th, 2018, in the City of Irondale, Council Chamber is located at 101 20th Street South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, in Jefferson County, Alabama. The City Council of the City of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed zoning of 2808 Edward Street Road, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, from R2 Residential District to C2 Commercial District. This was recommended to go forward and be approved by the planners on that meeting. And we have some comments on that, and we'll take further comments just so everybody will know what we're talking about.
Was that, was that both unanimous?
This is the...
Yeah, was the zoning both unanimous?
They did both unanimous.
Okay.
Good evening and thank you for having me.
Please, I'm sorry.
My name is Andrew Grimes. I'm from 5101 South French Hill Road, Portage, Michigan. I'm a representative of Kendall Electric. We are interested in coming into the city of Birmingham. I'm sorry.
That was a Geico moment. You didn't press the button on the mic and not really laugh.
Tell us where you are now. We're in Birmingham right now.
Oh!
We want to come down to Irondale. My apologies. We have currently 26 jobs that occupy our facility in downtown Birmingham. We're excited to, proposition of bringing those 26 jobs to the city of Irondale. We, to support our business, we'd like to build a 15,000 square foot building that's a mixed-use sales office and small warehousing. Our business is electrical distribution. We have a small retail sales counter. Most of our sales occur through inside sales and outside sales. Again, majority of our personnel in that facility is going to be sales or office support. During the planning and zoning hearing that we had, one of the comments that we got back was, we'd like to see what the, what you're bringing to the city of Irondale from a building perspective. That's why I brought with me today the diagrams that show what you've had in front of you are facing the same towards the public grounds. I wanted to, wanted to bring to everyone to show what it is we intend to bring, intend to build here. This is a preliminary schematic, but this is a very good outline of what our facility would look like nestled around the Grantsville Road.
And do mention a couple of things. You are a competitor with Mayor Electric and you're in that general vicinity now, basically across the street.
That is correct.
And also, this will be mainly wholesale. You will have some city sales, but you're mainly here for wholesale.
That's correct.
And then we'll delivery and there will be a buffer zone between the neighborhood and the building itself.
It's, again, it's still preliminary, but it looks like the back of the parking lot is about 75 to 80 feet from the easement. There's a 10-foot easement there. All that, all those trees remain intact. The building itself is greater than 150 feet from any of the parking lots.
How many, how many trucks are we, we're talking about, that's being housed at this particular facility?
Yep, we have two, what we call a cube van. It's a F-550 with a 16-foot box on it. We have two of those that go out every day and then we have a van and a pickup truck. Is the vehicles that we have. We do take in eight delivery from our own distribution center up in Knoxville. That comes in about 6 o'clock in the morning. It comes in, unloads, goes away. One of the things that we strive to do when we were designing this is to, taking into consideration the residents behind us, you notice all the parking spaces facing towards, there's nothing facing the rear. There won't be anybody starting their car, leaving it running, having headlights shine towards the neighbor's parking lot. We also have, the trash enclosure is, would be completely concealed. There won't be any trash. The trash that we do create is going to be packaging materials. Certainly some food for personal lunches or any sort of events that we do have where we bring it outside lunches. But for the most part, they're in that packaging material.
One other question that I had is, a while back, you know, we talked about businesses that's coming in, the facade, you know, look in a certain way, instead of just having, and I don't mean enough anybody, but I'm going to say it, but Butler Buildings just lined up down 78th Highway. It came up before, when I was on council previously, one of the administrations, that, you know, we had a, what was it, ordinance or something?
We have a misdemeanor ordinance.
In place. And I want to make sure this is not a Butler Building that's just coming in. Not that it gets Butler buildings, but something that's just coming in, they just got to sit there. Was that in place for this?
A comparison would be the warehouse that already exists. It'll be proximity. It's very similar in structure and looks.
If I'm not mistaken, the ordinance suggests that it has to be the entire office area of the building. Is that where the dividing line?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And so we have the entire base of the building facing Grantsville Road will be a split face brick. And then we took it back along the, will be the east side, all the way beyond where the sales counter is. The entire office area would be encompassed in blocks, split face block.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Go.
I think we have some pictures there where the truck is there.
Yep.
Is that where the vehicle will take place? On the front end?
No, the truck is, it's simply there for just the aesthetics, just to show what we're...
Where's that door?
The large door, the large overhead door is a, it's just an access door for us. On the backside of that, if you see in the site plan, this is where the truck docked. Okay. So just beyond the door that you see in the elevation schematic is the actual recess truck dock. So when a truck's parked in there, it will be recessed into the...
Thank you. Now I would open the floor for...
I was waiting my turn. You said you have trucks coming in at 6 o'clock in the morning. These, you know, these larger trucks, they go that beep, beep, beep when they're backing up. Does that, we don't have trucks that do that? Do your trucks do that? And so is it something that we can disconnect at 6 o'clock in the morning next to a residential district?
Our trucks do not have that. That's the only truck, the only truck that comes in at that time is our own delivery truck or our own transfer truck. It's not a semi. It's a, it's a longer box truck. To my knowledge, it does not have that. I can check on that. The volume of that backing is intended for very close proximity alerting. I would be very surprised if that beeping noise were to carry from the rear of the truck to, you know, through 150 feet of woods to the residential area. But it's, if it's a concern, it's something we can, we can look at to address. The beeping that is there, if it's on a truck, it is for safety.
Well, I understand, but is that something that can be disconnected at 6 o'clock in the morning?
I don't believe so. That's federal law. We lost Dr. Brooklyn because he didn't hear one backing up, so...
All right, that's the only objection I have. 6 o'clock in the morning, it's going to disturb the neighbors. I prefer that they reschedule a later delivery day, if that's possible.
Okay.
I think at this point, that's something we'll have to, you know, work with. It's something that you see how that goes. I think with the 150-foot buffer that we're talking about and the number of trees that are there, it's very thickly overgrown, so to speak, almost. I think it would basically absorb any sound that might go out toward the direction here. Those signals are intended for close proximity, not carryable distance. Now, anybody else before I ask the comments from our... Okay. Is there anybody here tonight that wants to speak in favor of this zoning?
I just have a question. The sign...
You would come to the microphone and bring your paper with you?
I don't have paper. I just want to ask him a question about if there will be a sign on Grantsville. Is there going to be some, you know, like McDonald's sign? Or are you just going to have something on the building? Do you know what I'm saying? From an aesthetic point of view, as you were pointing out.
To answer your question, there will be a sign. It will not be a tall, double-arched sign or anything that's that big. It will be low to the ground. I'm not sure what the ordinance is as far as sign size, but it will certainly be in compliance with the city ordinances. It will be set back off the road in compliance with the city ordinances. But it's, our typical is about a four-by-two sign that's up by the road.
Great, thanks.
Okay, now again, anybody here to speak in favor? Okay, is there anybody here that has any opposition to this zoning of this particular piece of property? And if not...
Make a motion that we leave public hearing on line number one and return to regular council meeting.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Notice is hereby given that its regular public meeting beginning at 6:30 PM on June 19th, 2018, in the Irondale City Council Chamber is located at 101 20th Street South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, in Jefferson County, Alabama. The City Council of the City of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed zoning of 1837 Grantsville Road, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, from C2 Commercial District to C1 Commercial District. Mr. South?
Hi, Jerry South, South Associate, Civilian Engineers, 3755, corporate Woods Drive, Vestager, 35242. We have submitted a, for a record map, a survey, and a site plan approval. And one of the items that has arisen during this process is the interest in the property. One of lots, and I will bring you all a copy of what we're specifically referring to. The property is owned by an LLC called GM34 LLC. And it is a variety of uses and it's all under, currently all under C2, which allows retail. There's what we have referred to as Lot 4. And this has been submitted in stone planning and they gave us an analysis on our proposal of the plat. But for Lot 4, we would like to make it a little more restrictive going from C2 to C1. And it gives us a little more flexibility with our uses. I say flexible, a little more restrictive in that we would not have to have any covenants to mandate a owner or purchaser to, what he could or could not do. So we feel like this would be a benefit of, because of some of the interest that had become in the property. The intended use is all storage. And the, there's some talk of interest of having living quarters, not like, not permanent, but temporary. And a lot of people referring to it as man cave, but it's all storage. And it would have facilities in it where you might have a large screen TV and maybe a small bedroom. But it definitely will have a bathroom. And so there was some concern that it might be considered a dwelling, but under C2, I'm sorry, under C1, we are allowed to do that. So it helps us with that and it's a little bit more restrictive. It'll help us with the use of property and the people that have become interested in it.
And this is the property behind Maserati.
I'm sorry, yes.
And we've heard about the main part of the project, which is a high-ended storage facility for what you would call dream cars, I guess.
Also car collectors.
You know, for the people that really want to put something of high value or something of very sentimental value in storage. And they, these facilities in other locations, people actually go visit their cars and spend time with them. So that was the idea for having the place they could have TV and sit and enjoy here.
You know, that was my next question. What are they going to do, just stay in and sleep with their cars or?
Hmm, I guess so. Or anything. I guess that way you have a bed and you can sleep in the car.
It's for a very unique segment of individuals that, again, very much thought through a business plan. It's been done and they see a need in this area, although there are a number of people that have a need for this type of storage, prepared to regularly store.
And each of these 24 by 48 will be owned, so there will be quite a bit of adware impacts that goes along with these 8 or 90 different units.
That was my next question. So will we have them all?
There will be ownership.
Okay.
That was a half-priced dog house.
Any other questions for Mr. South?
We won't put that sign on.
I did have one question. I know you're focusing on Lot 4, but on Lot 2, something I noticed on the site plan, retail, restaurant slash retail future development. Are you actively marketing that lot, do you think?
Yes, yes, aggressively marketing.
Okay.
That's on Lot 2?
Lot 2. Do you have a, just to the immediate left, in between the highlighting of Marketing Grantsville, what type of business, well, never mind, I'm not even going to ask that question. You're actively marketing it. That's enough for me.
Aggressively marketing.
Hey, I live there and I'd be glad when they put something out there this, this nice retail.
You're a SUV store?
I would open it up to the floor. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak in support of this particular zoning change? Do we have anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this particular zoning change? If not...
Make a motion, we leave public hearing and return to regular council meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion, we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing for item number 3.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Notice is hereby given that its regular public meeting beginning at 6:30 PM on June 19th, 2018, in the City, in the Irondale City Council Chamber is located at 101 20th Street South, Irondale, Alabama, 35210, in Jefferson County, Alabama. The City Council of the City of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed zoning of 4210, under... concerning the proposed rezoning of four-two-one-o, Underwood Industrial Drive, Ironwood, Alabama, three-five-two-one-zero, from an I-two industrial district to an I-three industrial park district. Okay? And do we have any here?
I'm here from the hillside. I don't, you stand what I was supposed to say, do you? I'll answer questions, but I don't know much about.
Blitz, would you like to make a comment?
Mr. Nice, out of town, please, as a gentleman, a gentleman to come and represent. This is the last two parcels of property on the dead end of Industrial Drive. Actually, two, those two parcels of property, that's three buildings only, that's still closed, that the bank, the bank owns it, they have that buyer for the property, they just steal back the company, moving here, and we asked them to, several issues to clean up on it, some of the buildings across the supposed property line between the two, they have resurfaced it into one lot, it's been things they've asked them to do. And actually, the front piece is I-three, the rest of the industrial park out there is I-three. This was the piece at the rear end, which was still old I-two, so it's sort of, if you will, for sale, it's not as only less than a dollar at the same time.
A holiday, a few holidays.
And this was another that was recommended polling by the planning committee to be adopted, so let, do you have any questions?
I do. What was out there, I mean, we were about to do it still, Fab? When there was activity out there, I had a resident who lives literally right, I guess, in front of that, because the lot kind of comes up and does this little number, there's a house right over here on hood, and he was getting a lot of dust and all kinds of wonderful stuff coming into his yard and runoff and stuff like that. That would be really, my only concern is apparently whatever they needed to do to keep that stuff from leaving the facility wasn't really done, so I would simply ask, are there any measures in place to keep, you know, stuff, dust, and runoff from coming into his yard like the previous person?
If I may respond?
Sure.
That's probably more of an inspection issue.
Okay.
One thirty.
Okay.
Well, where we do have a very aggressive city inspector now.
Yes.
We will take care of it in that nature. So let me make sure.
No, good, good.
Make sure I understand, it's still, still fabricated government, same, same issue.
There's three existing buildings on the block.
Okay, we'll open it up to the floor, do we have anyone here in support of this major tonight that would like to make comments of favor? Not, do we have anyone here that would like to make comments opposing this particular piece of change?
Make a motion, we leave public hearing and return to regular council meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Make a motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing for item number four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Notice is hereby given that it's regular public meeting beginning at six thirty on June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in the Irondale City Council Chamber located at one-on-one twentieth street south, Irondale, Alabama, three-five-two-one-zero, within Jefferson County, Alabama. The City Council of the City of Irondale will hear comments from interested citizens concerning the proposed rezoning of nineteen-hundred Crestwood Boulevard, Irondale, Alabama, three-five-two-one-zero, from C-one commercial district to a C-two commercial district. And was there anyone here to comment, make comments on that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, the commission, and also the council, excuse me, and also Mr. Mayor. My name is Martin Evans, two thousand and one, Hart Place, North Birmingham, Alabama, forty-five-two-zero-three. I'm here representing Race Track Petroleum in this rezoning case. If I could, my colleague here has passed out the, out my presentation, but I also have it electronically, if I could try to get it pulled up real quick.
Good evening, I'm Samuel Dolby, I'm the project manager for Race Track Petroleum. To start off, I'll just give a quick overview of Race Track. We're a third-generation family-owned business. We're actually second-largest private, private company in the state of Georgia, if you think back to Dwight's third. We have stores, all are sort of corporate, own and corporate run. Serving guests since nineteen thirty-four, headquartered in Atlanta, and we operate in Texas, Louisiana, Georgia, and Florida, and expanding in Alabama. Just to point out, this is an actual picture of one of our latest buildings, and to point out, on the right side, we have a nice patio feature that we encourage our guests to come out and get some of the features that I'll talk about later, and enjoy the atmosphere of what we present out there. A couple pictures and of rendering, so rendering is in the top left of what would actually be building out here in Irondale. Top right is our yogurt. We are the largest trigger of frozen yogurt in the nation. Bottom right is what our building looks like on the inside. As you can see, high ceilings, nice lighting, open space, very clean. Bottom left is the coffee feature that we have. Some of the offerings that we have in our stores, talked about the yogurt, we have fresh sandwiches, breakfast items as well. And then to highlight some of the benefits that we have to the community that we would like to bring to Irondale, twenty, twenty-five local employees that work at the store will improve to grow as we expand in Alabama. Since two thousand and six, Race Track has awarded more than one million in scholarships to our store members. Since two thousand and nine, store campaigns have raised more than half a million for nonprofits and the local community to grow. Twenty percent of our executive leadership has started out in the store, so as you can see, once we get our employees, raise them up, and we help them grow within our company. And we have been awarded a top place award in all of our markets, so Atlanta, Dallas, Texas, New Orleans, and Tampa Bay as well. And I'll hand it off to Martin to talk about comprehensive planning and any ideas.
Thank you, Sammy. Sorry to shuffle around, but I have a slide here of the comprehensive plan of the City of Irondale that was created just two years ago. And the comprehensive plan speaks specifically to this property that's here on the corner of Crestwood Boulevard and Crestwood Boulevard and Kilmer War, or twentieth street. And Sammy, if you could, let me go to the next slide. The property here is shown under the land use plan as being slated for general commercial, and that after the cities and citizens' collaboration, that is what they have chosen to be the designated use for this property. The comprehensive plan also outlines two priority rezoning areas, one being downtown, the other being the Highway Seventy-Eight corridor, and this property is one of the specific ones listed and to be given priority. And as you can see, the primary land uses for this property would be in commercial and service, which would be consistent with our proposed use for the property. One of, the slide there here shows that there's a section that follows, that speaks about priority redevelopment, and I think it's interesting here, and I'll read just one portion that says, it speaks to what Irondale needs to do to redevelop this area. They discuss this being a suffering economic corridor, and that it needs to be redeveloped. But in order to do so, the city, the last sentence here on the bottom, the city of Irondale will need to use public policies like tax abatements, grants, and other special incentives to promote redevelopment. And I want to let you all know that Race Track is choosing Irondale and not asking for any incentives, although that the comprehensive plan contemplated, that would be something that would be needed to attract development. Race Track has done market studies here, has chosen this corridor, the visibility is wonderful, and I think there's been some concerns about us pulling business from existing gas stations, but Race Track's really a destination store. When I travel, you know, I look for Race Tracks and Loves and other things, because I like to be jerky, and then, you know, they have loyalty programs and things like that for car holders, so we think that there's really a lot of additional customers and a lot of additional sales revenues that we can bring in. Our, Race Track's also going to invest millions and millions of dollars, I think it's close to ten million dollars in developing this site, six to ten million dollars, I think, developing this site, which is going to be a substantial increase in your available tax base for this property. Here's a rendering of our site plan, as you can see, our building is facing towards Highway Seventy-Eight, and our canopies will be in front of the building. Not a lot more here to see, but generally, the traffic should be directed to and from Highway Seventy-Eight, and there'll be limited traffic on twentieth street behind. Here's a rendering of our landscape plan, as you can see, there will be a lot of landscaping planned, there'll be more trees and more bushes and things of that sort. This plan shows that there will be less impervious surfaces on this property than there currently are with the existing medical clinic or office use, and we're going to have, you know, there's no landscape buffer right now between the church, which is located at the rear, and the Race Track market here. So this will be an improvement of that landscape buffer and also an improvement of the green space here on this corner. And here's a picture of our proposed signs, which we will have out front, but, you know, we are excited to be here in Irondale, we are very hopeful that we will be a catalyst to redevelopment of the Seventy-Eight corridor, and really bring in, and help the city bring in additional revenues for the city and additional businesses to serve itself as residents. So I'll let you, any questions, y'all have?
Can I ask questions?
One question we talked about, right at that corner, it's a real nice sign, is that part of the negotiation, discussion? Oh, okay. Could that be part of the discussion as far as moving this project?
Absolutely. We're, we are used to working with cities and providing an address for signings for them, and that is something that we do not want to take away, the area for the existing signs, we want to leave sufficient space, we ought to continue to do that. And as far as construction costs are concerned and things like that, certainly we, something we'd be willing to discuss with the city. Obviously, you know, we need to know about what the cost and that sort of thing would be, but we certainly want to partner with the city to the extent we can, it's not cost prohibitive for us to actually make it a better sign and make it a better area, or, you know, improve it, I guess, but.
And of course, you're not talking about, you know, I'm concerned about those other gas station also, we've had discussions, it's not safe. We talked about Sam's property, why is that property not more like in your liking as a best point of product?
Well, the Sam's property visibility from I-twenty is not as good on that property, and that's the reason why this is a more attractive site. And last night at the work session, I mentioned that I ran across a study from two thousand and nine done by Greater Birmingham Planning Commission, and there was a study on the Highway Seventy-Eight corridor, and there was a market analysis where they studied the amount of demand for gas stations and the amount of supply, and there was actually a deficiency. This was back in two thousand and nine, so there was actually more demand for gas stations in the city than the supply at the time. That, well, that study was done prior to the Sam's location shutting down. So, you know, now, there certainly had much larger deficit, and the city has room for growth of revenue, and so that is, hopefully that will help your concerns about pulling revenue from one station and shutting down, you know, for ours and shutting down the other. So the, not Race Track's internal studies, you know, the actual Greater Birmingham Planning Commission, their own studies indicate that there's a market for this, not, it's been a few years, but.
Of course, you know, you say that Race Track, we've got catalysts of development in that corridor, do you have any studies showing other places where Race Track has been a catalyst to develop the area around it?
I, I think that there's probably somebody that can answer your question better. I know Mr. Ratliff, who's the owner of this property, he's very experienced in the retail industry, and, I don't know if we have representatives of Race Track here that can talk more about that, but.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Like I said, we have stores in Texas, Florida, Georgia, where Race Track has come in and inspired and brought in other people to look into the area a little bit more to see, hey, Race Track is willing to invest five to ten million dollars in this area, in the state of this property, let's look at this more, and we've seen where they were, spurred development, redevelopment within the area.
Do you have that, what we could see, where that Race Track station has?
Yeah, I can, I, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know if any, I can't, off the top of my head, but I can definitely look it up and provide that looking for you.
Because that's important, that's important. That, Race Track's come there, it just can't be Race Track. It has to spur some other development in that community, and not just on that quarter, but all the way up Kilmer, hopefully. That's what, and that's what, hopefully that's what the council was looking for, so I would love to know that.
Yeah, I'll look it up, and I'll use my.
Flood zone, there was a little bit of talk, a little bit of talk about the planned zoning being, about that area maybe being in a flood zone. Did any of the site engineers and stuff like that kind of, you know, speak to that a little bit?
It sounds, but we're actually, the building's not in a flood zone, just a portion of the property is, and we're not developing in the flood zone, except for some parking area, but nothing that's outside what is allowed in the town, so.
Okay. And that flood is more to speak of, if shades was to come above its banks, it's not necessarily rising water from within the dirt coming straight up.
Right, it's not a floodway. The way is actually across the street, this is a, this is an elevation flood zone, we're going above for the elevation.
So are y'all going to be raising the deck a little bit?
We're raising the building itself.
Okay.
The existing building now actually is lower than what would be allowed if we put that, so we have to raise the building. The parking lot doesn't have to raise.
Okay. And then another thing that was kind of mentioned, the existing, I know y'all said that y'all were not going to mess with the existing entrances and exits, and in kind of thinking about it, I don't know how many times you've actually tried to make that right into this, you know, into that lot from Seventy-Eight, it can, it can be a little tight.
We're actually going to widen, because we do have trucks that we're going in, gas trucks.
Yeah.
We're not messing with the actual location, but we're really actually updating the entrance.
Okay.
We already, we've already talked about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman, one of the things that was emphasized last night, this is not a location where eighteen roofers would probably fill up, it's not designed for that.
Right.
Because they have a limit on the amount that can be humped at one time, plus just the jungle accommodation.
Yeah, yeah, I've been, I mean, I've written in the Race Track, there's a trial, and I like the store, but there will be eighteen roads coming in, filling up the pumps, and what, what time of day will they be coming?
Talking about, do we feel to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in general, we avoid the peak hours, so mornings and afternoons are our evenings when people are in there, the fuel trucks don't come, and then they'll try to come usually during the middle of the day, those are the slower periods of our day when they come in, we feel they'll come in on Seventy-Eight and that, and out of Seventy-Eight.
So if that turn's going to be wide enough, or if you really get it, you're sticking at the canopy, and your pump's there.
Correct, yeah, we have, we have a truck turn software program that when we design our site plan, that it specifically looks out for that.
So if you show me on that picture where that truck's coming, how would that truck come in on that, on that, this shut, would it come in? If you'll, how? So you just make that turn and come back out the same?
Correct.
Is that the question for the council, please? Thank you. Now, we'll open the floor to first, anybody here in support of this change of zoning?
Now, we'll open the floor to first anybody here in support of this change of zoning. And we're going to open it up for anybody that's here to oppose. I will, one person at a time, just a moment, please. And you'll have your three minutes at the mic. Remember, you're here to state your opposition. We're not here to make suggestions on where they should place it, what they should do differently. We're here to suggest either you're opposed to this zoning change and if you want to state a reason, that's fine. Please not try, not to be repetitive. If somebody before you has stated the same reason, just simply state your opposition. And it'll start...
That's in favor? Did you ask for those in favor of?
Yes.
Are we allowed to go up?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I didn't, you didn't make a move, Cindy.
Well, I'm sorry, quick, bye, quick.
Come on, please.
Cindy Quayart, fifty-seven twenty-nine Belmont Drive. And I'm very excited about Race Track. I'm familiar with Race Track. I've traveled through Texas quite a bit, go see my nephew in Dallas. You're up off of, I believe it's thirty-five is the route that I take and I can say that they are a outstanding organization. It is not a gas fill-up. It is where people buy other items. It is a substantial amount of revenue for the city, which is something that we're lacking and we desperately need. And I'm especially impressed, impressed with the staff that they have, the employees they have are very professional, service oriented. I never have to worry about not getting paper, my paper receipt when I charge gas. And I like that. I don't like when I'm in a hurry to have to go in and get a receipt. And then when I'm not in a hurry, I like the fact that I can stop and relax, enjoy some good cup of coffee and breakfast. Or if it's in the evening, I can have an evening meal there. So, I just want to speak in favor of it. I think it's great for Irondale. And if there's a question about bringing businesses, you know, can you give us some examples of businesses that you bring in? Well, that's really our responsibility. That's not Race Track. The name Race Track will bring it in, a professional site, but it gives us the opportunity to bring in other businesses when you have something of a ten million dollar caliber. That's our job. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. And in case I missed anybody else trying to say something to support.
Regina Bairdham, forty-fifty-six Shearborn Road, Irondale. I'm just, I'm in favor of any businesses coming to Irondale right now. I don't particularly like where it's gonna be given, gonna be built, because I like it over in my neighborhood on the other side of four fifty-nine. But money is money, is money, is money. Thank you.
All right. Is that the last of the support comments? Okay. They're now open and what I'll do, let's start with this side on the front row. Anybody on this side that would like to make a comment against?
Jenny Brown, four one five four River Road Road. I'm opposed to this for a couple of reasons. The main one is that I don't feel like it's the highest and best use for that piece of property. It is the entrance way, it's the gateway, it's the storefront of Irondale going over into Old Irondale and into the resident's community. I'm concerned about the sign. I know last night we learned that it is a telescopically signed, you didn't give me the measurements of the sign tonight. You might want to do that, it's, which, what is, it might be signed, what are they allowed on?
Depends on the sign and the height, it's not their property, interstate too.
Or a day...
You wanna make some video demo, look at all the sites.
Okay. Is this a conforming or a non-conforming sign? Are there gonna be a variance on any of this? And also in looking up, and this is a digitized sign, and it'll change messages pretty often, fifteen seconds or whatever.
Change price every one of them.
Okay. And in doing some research on these digitized signs, I learned that Memphis recently had a case about eight months ago and they did decline it, that these digitized signs do contribute to life, they decrease property values, they do kill migratory birds laying into them, but they also decrease driver's safety on the interstate. That's something to be considered. Not only, the building itself, and I have nothing against Race Track, but I just don't, I think this is the best use for that piece of property. I prefer to see some multi-use development wrapping around that corner. We have some talent in architects. We have Stuart Perry right here in our own...
Again, would you just, what are your comments? We're not, we're here for suggestions, we're here for your comments against it and why you're against it.
Okay. I oppose it because it's not the highest and best use for that piece of property. And the tall sign that will affect everybody, wait, do you live in that community or not?
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay? Anybody else on that side of the room, on the front row? Okay, we'll go to this side, I'll give us everybody that's here. Go to the second row.
I'm John Clayborne, five nineteen Twentieth Street South, directly across the street from where this is proposed to be built. So, I moved to Irondale thirty-one years ago, lived here continuously since that time. And about two and a half years ago, because of the location on the other side of Irondale, there were stairs that were necessary, my wife couldn't negotiate them, so we moved down to Twentieth Street where we have one level house. We intended to live there until we died. And we may die sooner than I thought, we're gonna have all this confusion and the building of this twenty million dollar building or whatever it is, first of all, will disrupt everything in the neighborhood. And second of all, again, I live directly across Twentieth Street from the back entrance of that, so it can be a continuous traffic twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And so I vigorously oppose the putting of this facility at that location. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Just for your comments, thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Hey, I'm James Clayborne, I'm, that's my dad.
Sir, to speak to the council, please.
Hey, council. I'm guessing guys that the white box there is your dumpster, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, well, the back entrance there actually is in my dad's front yard and I live just a few houses up. I own a couple of restaurants and so I know a little bit about the nature of food service, trash and trash disposal. So, I'm guessing that between five and seven AM, four or six days a week, we'll get dumpsters coming in there and lifting those dumpsters up. I mean, we'll get trucks coming in there and lifting those dumpsters up to shake them. It's gonna be really loud, it's gonna be really stinky. We already have quite a bit of traffic on Twentieth Street that goes really fast. We already have quite a bit of litter on Twentieth Street that is distributed from the two existing gas stations that we already have. So, I'm opposed because of the, the noise, the light and the litter that this, that this gas station will bring. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on that particular row? We'll move to this side. All right. Go back to the row we were speaking to, our thoughts. Across from her, Cindy, down. Okay? Go to the next row down, on that side. Coming back over this way. Mayor, council?
I am Pastor David Holmes of the United Methodist, oh, Irondale United Methodist Church, which immediately is next door to this facility that's gonna be built. And we have some concerns about having that to look at, but also I was concerned about the fact that if this is gonna be a facility that is going to serve and sell items, what about alcoholic beverages? What is the ordinance for here in this city for a business to be located next to a church or any facility like that to sell alcoholic beverages? We also have an AA group that meets at our church and that's a concern of mine, that this is gonna be so close to that. But that's why I'm opposed to it.
I'll be glad to look at that, I'm not aware of the ordinance. They're right next to it.
Think Mr. Gerald said a comment?
It's next to it. They're right next to it. Yeah, I'm, again, I'm not aware of any of those, that would impact that, but I'll be glad to look and see what's ahead.
Now, I've almost lost my road, but I think, you see him on the end, if you're on the other side of the room on that side? Anybody on the back? Okay, coming back over this way?
I have a quick question. Why does it say nineteen, why does it say nineteen hundred, question with gold word? Because that's not the address of that property.
According to Jersey County tax, that's the, that's the, this property, which is path of the entire tribe of states.
It's, it's the legal recorded address of the property in the Jersey County tax records. But anybody else that wants to come forward and make a comment, I'd see you at the back. Okay? This side of the room? All right, thank you.
I don't have a positive opinion or a general statement. May I be allowed to make a general statement?
Let's finish up in the room.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you...
But again, this is only, no general statements, this is either support or against.
Okay. It's just, it's been to my attention that I'm not sure if people are aware of, so...
Denise Frye, I live at twenty-one thirty-five Fifth Carol South. And I live the block behind where this is proposed for and we have spoken with different ones about this and we're all against it because of all the noise, pollution and the trucks coming in and out and the traffic twenty-four seven. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, we were still in the back of the room. Back over this far point. All right, thank you.
I don't want the piece of paperwork, I'll take it right here.
You need the recorded, please, you can do that after you're finished, but please give it to the city clerk.
I'm James Morgan, I live at five oh three Deering Street. I'm right across from Methodist Church. You remember I didn't buy dumpsters? I get waked up about four o'clock every morning from the dumpster across the street of nineteen hundred. So, I'm very familiar with no ifs from a dumpster. I just happen to hit a hot spot with it. Anyway, I'm very familiar, I've been to a lot of race tracks, they're fine service station. I don't think this is a good use of that service station here. We're downzoning the area, the residential all around this place, the Methodist Church is next door. It's just not, it doesn't make sense to me. Money talks, I didn't realize that, but this is not always a money issue. It's a quality of life. This is the entrance, the gateway to Irondale. If we're gonna sell out to a raceway, I guess we will, but that's where I stand.
Any questions? If you'll please just fill out the paperwork, we'll get to the city clerk and we appreciate it. And now, would there any more comments from the general public in the back? All right? Have you finished all general? One more? All right, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Steve Woodfield, I'm a thirty-seven year resident here in Irondale. From a personal standpoint, I would reiterate several of the comments that have been made. I'm not sure this is the best use of the property that's there, nothing in the choice track, too, but they're fine coming. From a secondary perspective, I was asked by the trustees of the United Methodist Church to come speak. We're disappointed, number one, that we weren't notified that this was going on. I understand we should have gotten a registered letter, we did not.
We sent the address to K Melwood, that's on record with Jersey County.
Well, we, again, we did not see. Same concerns that have been mentioned here, concern over noise, concern over safety, concern over additional fumes, concern over visibility from that area. And I guess, as I've read the ordinances, it looked like there's an ordinance that says you can't build within, I think, seven hundred and fifty feet of another service station. It also looked like there is an ordinance that says you can't build within five hundred feet of a building for public assembly. Did I misread that?
No, sir. They have already gone to the variance board and we had our city inspector check all the records. We're probably one of the only cities with that. They went to the variance board, the variance board heard the case because it was arbitrary and they decided that if the zoning went through, they would waive that because we're also pending amendment to our regulations, exempted out because we can't find anybody else with those type of regulations in here.
Well, again, had we been notified, I'm trying to catch up right now, so...
There was a, we went over that.
Well, we'll all, we as the trustees of the United Methodist Church, very, very sound.
Thank you. Ms. Gray, can you think of a way to state what you want to state as far as a support or a against?
Yeah. Because I want to hear what she has to say.
Well, it needs to be, I mean, natural walking over before...
Yeah, she had a general statement.
So, Jen Gray, thirty-six thirty-six Belmont Road, very short. During my conversations on the Irondale forum, because I'm running for the House District, I'm going to all these other places, Shelby County and Jefferson County. And so I was, when I was at a Chelsea meeting, there was a discussion with the Alabama Communities of Excellence ACE. When I, and so that's, that's a thing where you, between two and eighteen thousand, you familiar with this? And so when I asked the woman afterwards, I said, I really, you have a free, a free phase plan and they help you get through it and everything is worked on together. And I asked the woman there, I said, I really wish that Irondale was working on something like this and she said, well, they are. I've been out there, I've talked to the people and mentioned Aaron and his wife, Aaron Spag and there's been a couple of other people that I, that I know, I don't have evidence with me. And so I just thought that you guys were calling the Irondale Move Plan, the ACE Plan. My understanding with those phases of development is that there's grant money available for it. And so that if you are doing something, that you could make this a win-win-win situation and if you have this, you've already actually done phase one to become an Alabama Community of Excellence and didn't know if you knew it. So, I wanted to make sure that you knew that and to try and get involved in that and do this all in some way that it was respective of that and maybe get some of that grant money. Does that...
It does, it does. Some of us are familiar with it. There's an ACE award given out each year at the Alabama League of Municipal...
Remember, we're not...
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Very much. Okay, any more comments against from anyone in the room that has spoken? Remember, you've made comments, so when we open up for comments on the agenda items... No, sir, you've had your turn, I'm sorry. For one time thing. Thank you. When we open up for general comments, you've made your comments before, you don't need to make them during the open agenda item comment section. That's the reason for the public hearing. All right? Do we have anybody else? Okay?
I'd like a motion that we leave public hearing and return to regular council meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you favor? Any opposed? Motion here.
I'd like a motion that we leave regular council meeting and go into public hearing. I have a moment to find.
Shall I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Notice is hereby given that at its regular public meeting, noon at six thirty PM on June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and the Irondale City Council changes. You can locate it at one oh one Twentieth Street South, Irondale, Alabama, three five two one zero, within Jefferson County, Alabama. The City Council of the City of Irondale is here commenting to interested citizens concerning the proposed rezoning of five three five zero and five three five two Grand Foot Road, Irondale, Alabama, three five two one zero, from C-one Commercial District to C-two Commercial District. Please.
How are y'all? My name's Michael Johnson, I'm a commercial real estate agent with Eagle Realty. Our client is the owner of the property located at the address, Mount Chia La Properties in L. C. And we've recently reached a long-term lease agreement with a group called Classic Collision. The gentleman represents Classic Collision, his mother had a stroke this afternoon and had to turn around and go back to Atlanta. But they are, they have twenty-plus locations, mainly in Atlanta, the Atlanta area, family owned business and we, we're happy to discuss anything we can.
And again, this was a collision repair for higher-end cars. They do several things to keep environmentally friendly, use all the water-based paints. There will be no car storage overnight except in the back of the building, which is already fenced. And this would be existing, it's been the everything from a car dealership to a motorcycle dealership. So, it's, the building exists as it stands and will be modified somewhat just on the exterior for your signage, etc.
Correct. And their main, their main clients are large insurance carriers. They don't do a whole lot of cash and carrier business. They mainly work with the guy goes of the world who has clients. the world who have clients.
Any questions?
Mike? How are you, sir?
How are you?
Do you have any, um, what kind of, uh, you want to do as a responsibility, sir, do you know anything about that?
Uh, the building itself, the management remained the same, you know, the building right now looks great, I don't know, maybe some painting on the exterior, and obviously signage, but most of the capital put into project will be in the interior.
And, sir, do you have any, uh, thoughts on that?
I don't have anything yet, I'm not, you know, we're, we're waiting to get this done before we really dive into this, but it'll be mostly, they're no type work, um, they are installing a large paint booth, um, for their painting of the automobiles, um, but very minimal office space as well, um, so it's not a whole lot's going to be done to the building, but, um, it's going to be a long-term lease agreement, that we'd love to see.
How are you?
I think, um, I'd say six to eight employees, I would have to play with.
I think when it was brought up, it contains only, it was a minimal number of employees, but it's a very highly specialized industry, uh, and they have, they don't have duty for some most positions, uh, people cross-training, you can go from job to job.
Correct. Is the name of the collision center?
Classic Collision. You can Google them, I'm very, very impressed with it.
Classic Collision.
When you talk about long-term, what's, what's the term?
Uh, we have a ten-year deal with...
Ten?
Yes, sir. And they have an option for stability.
Any other questions from the council? All right? They'll open up the floors, if anyone here is speaking, say. Any likewise, is there anyone here to speak against this rezoning? Please, ma'am, councilor.
I'm Kathy Nolan, I live on Yellham Drive, right behind the proposed property. Uh, my concern is the, um, the noise, and will they be working until midnight, one, two o'clock, because I've been by several collision places, like the one across, uh, Highland Church, that they're there till all hours of the night, and all hours of, you know, and start at the crack of dawn, and, and the pims, and everything, will that be a surprise?
I think I can answer that question, there's a collision center right next to neighborhood of Hollywood, and I've, we hear no, no reports from, uh, from the...
Sorry, no old business hours, um, and everything, all work is done in enclosed area, so nothing's done on the exterior, um...
And you said nothing stored?
No, ma'am, they, they get parts in and out of there, no, their, their, their motto is we'll lose them behind your cars there very long, they're not the storage, car storage business either.
Right.
They go in your car, you're not, so, yeah, you know, when you don't have your car, people come in, get put in your car.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Yes, but it's not reciprocal junkyard, okay? It's, they work with high-end insurance companies, and their job is to get the cars out of there.
Yeah, that's another concern, is parts and pieces.
Um, no, they don't do a whole lot of expensive, full-body repairs, mostly smaller.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other from the audience? All right, folks? Would you please...
I make a motion that we leave public hearing and return to regular council meetings.
Do I have a second? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appreciate it. All right. So, we have everything, it's probably approved of the agenda, are we going to have to modify anything or have one item?
I do not believe we're going to have to modify anything, I have one item.
All right.
I make a motion that the agenda be approved and submitted.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
A question, question, first. All right. Where will we start to deal with that?
Uh, I will address that when we get to it.
I will, we need to address it right now. We need to approve their agenda, we have to address it now.
Well, the, uh...
The, the, I, I have spoken with several people, and if you would, put this in the, uh, the minutes, uh, under that item, thanks, I have spoken with several people in my district, and all of them have declined, that all that I've spoken to have declined to take the position on the debate board, and so therefore I have deferred my appointment to the State Department.
With that being said, we call it a vote.
Think we had a second already?
Yep, we got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we'll take public comments on agenda items only, this is for comments other than what we've already covered in our public hearings, if there's anything you can comment from the public at this point. All right? Now, we'll move right into new business, if anybody wants to pick up a number one.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty eighteen R dash thirty-four that appoints Judy Beard and Sharon Lovelace be approved, to the House of the Debate Board be approved.
I have a question. Uh, is Sharon Lovelace here?
Actually, my name is Judy, but I'm here.
Okay.
Sorry, I knew better, I was just reading from the, the text.
Is it, is it Sharon or Judy Lovelace?
Judy.
Judy Lovelace?
Yes.
Okay, we just got the name wrong.
Yeah, it's wrong. And I do that going into it, it's red.
Okay. Okay, clarify, is there any additional question before we have a second? And everybody's clear about Counselor Beard's statement and the reason for that?
Yeah, I'm gonna need to point my wife to one of the committees next week, so...
Well, I'm calling for a second already.
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next order of business.
Absolutely.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty eighteen R thirty-five be approved.
Do I have a second on that? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And just so, for your note, that is moving the next, uh, the second meeting in July from the seventeenth to the nineteenth. Again, too, to the earlier seventeenth, there would be a runoff in the elections that would be held here at City Hall, so, and it will be tied up here. All right, moving on to number four.
I make a resolution, I make a motion that Resolution twenty eighteen R thirty-six be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries, all right? Moving on to number four.
I make a motion that Resolution twenty eighteen R dash thirty-seven be approved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to the first of our rezoning, uh, ordinances.
I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash, sorry, twenty eighteen dash fourteen be considered read. Do I have four ten on that one?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay?
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fourteen be suspended and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
A roll call vote, Counselor London?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
Yes. Myself, yes.
I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fourteen be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Do I have a second on that one?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fifteen be considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay?
I make a motion, um, that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fifteen be suspended, and that unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Counselor London?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Good?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fifteen be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash fifteen be considered read. Sixteen?
Sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah, sixteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty eighteen dash sixteen be suspended, and the unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor London?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Beard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash sixteen be finally passed and, and adopted and introduced.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right?
All right, I make a motion that ordinance number twenty eighteen dash seventeen be considered read.
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Do I have a note?
No.
Okay.
Counselor, if you agree, then... That's it, we, not only that four, we just, that's just a note to the read, it's passed, that portion of it passed.
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty eighteen dash seventeen be suspended, and that unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Counselor London?
No.
Okay? Do I have a point?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes, to the consideration of said ordinance.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
Myself, yes.
And that failed.
Okay.
It failed.
That will come back to the next meeting for a vote, one way or the other, a majority in that case will carry the vote. Tonight, one vote fails, the next meeting, uh, majority will carry it, just for the understanding, all right? Okay, we'll move on to the next one.
I make a motion that ordinance twenty eighteen dash, twenty eighteen dash eighteen be considered read.[1717.41]